So let's start the November ninth planning board meeting. First thing are minutes from last month. Am I okay to go? Did you start the recording?
Yeah.
Um, we paid a bill. We extended the cassock resolution and we voted on the fine art final resolution. Very straightforward meeting. The whites were here that we had a sense of discussion with them about their application. Actually, we have to add that we on this under resolutions that we also the white amendment resolution was. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that before we voted on that.
Yeah, it is there.
Under resolutions?
It's not under resolution because we technically opened the work session and then we reopened the business meeting in a minute.
Oh, so you did a sequential?
Yeah. I mean, it should be.
That's fine.
Reporters respectively.
Right.
Happen.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry. So anyone see any issues with this? So I make a motion to accept the 12 October meeting minutes. Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right. We have a lot of correspondence. Copy of the list is available for those who want it. Mostly dealt with the white property from some of the bloom handful of wetlands applications. And some invoices. The copies are available if you guys want. Anyone wants a copy? We have three invoices tonight, first from the Reiner group. Professional services. These out with some notes. The September invoice was mainly for some work on Robert, a lot on white. And attending one meeting, 10 and a quarter hours. And the total is $1,577.50. I see it as appropriate. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the September invoice from the Reiner group, 157750.
Hold second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Second invoice from EHA. And this and mostly deals with white. Some work on the cassock and fine art applications. And also some for the town, working with the Bob Di Stefano on transfer development rights in the town legislation. Which I guess is okay for the planning board to pick up. Technically, that would be a town charge, but we'll pick it up. 22 and a quarter hours with the count with the discount $6,260.92. And I think this work is very valuable and I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for October at 626092.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And then we have an invoice from the Reiner group for October. And again, this is 100% white application. Some 15 and a half hours and totals $2,365. And I believe that's acceptable. So I make a motion to accept the Reiner groups October invoice for 2365. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Great. We have two extension resolutions tonight. So we'll do the Haberl Clark one first. They're both for lot line adjustments and both are hung up at the county clerk. Who is taking phenomenally long doing anything right now. And so these are both first app first extensions. This is very straightforward. I make a motion to accept resolution number 23 of 2021. For the extension time limitation on Haberl Clark lot line adjustment. Do I have a second?
Hold second.
All in favor?
All right.
And same reason for the margin vice lot line adjustment. It's the same first extension, so seems legitimate to me. So I make a motion to accept resolution number 24 of 2021 for the margin vice lot line adjustment. Extension. Well, I have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Great. So that closes our business meeting and we're on to. I'm sorry, before I close that. Valerie, did you want to comment on something with vice or?
I'm sorry.
I actually, I don't, I don't recall the post work sessions. There's a person here from anyone.
Well, no, we were open.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm Valerie Marvin and I represent Marianne Bache. And with this with regard to the lot line adjustment. And I'm grateful for the extension. Thank you. I don't actually know how long it is, but I did want to ask a question about this. I know that I owe you proof of the deed recording, at which point then you are authorized to sign the map for recording, correct? So we sent the deeds in for recording this week. Certified copies are taking six to eight weeks. That's a certified copy if we can get it. If not, it's months. So I just wanted to, I know you know that there are delays, but I'm just letting you know, I don't know how long this extension is for.
Six months.
Six months. So it should cover, but you will accept a certified copy if I get that prior to actually a recording. The recorded copy coming back from the county.
Beth, is that, that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So I may have that within the next six to eight weeks, so that would be.
So you have until May 11th?
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay.
So I'm going through the current applications, the fine art subdivision. We gave them the final resolution, so they're just working on their deeds. And they have until the 21st of April. We have the blooms here. And we got a new map from them this week. Or last week. And Joe put together, quickly put together a memo for us. Joe, do you want to go through some of your comments in the memo?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Um, essentially what this revised memo does is changes the map to reflect a lot line modification that took place between the blooms and the Dunbar property. So now what was an easement? The 20 foot wide easement that went out to West Neck Road. That served or provided access to lot three is now actually part of lot three. In addition, the previous sketch plan had a 25 foot wide access easement or right of way going back to serve lot two. That has been eliminated and lot two has become a flag lot with its own 20 foot wide access strip. Those things at the planning board at the time, because I think we're going back two years now. Were interested in seeing done. A couple of minor mapping issues. The subject property is in building zone C. And the map has a zone, a line that shows the zoning districts. But the labeling is reversed. They have zone B on top and zone C on the bottom and it should be C on top, so. So it shows that the subject property is in zone C. Again, that's just a minor change. This is sketch plan. That's something that can be addressed on final. You know, the applicants are going to have to go to the health department next. And when they come back with revised maps, that's the kind of revision that can can be done. And again, the on lot one is a one story garage. And it has a dimension to the property line, but it was the previous property line when there was an easement that served lot two. So that dimension should be adjusted. And just be taken from the garage to the proposed property.
Copies of a.
No, these are red lines. Do you need the second?
No, no, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We don't, we don't have paper copies here.
I'm sorry. These chamber of commerce people didn't leave until.
You want to give it a sec? You look, I looked at, I have certainly looked at this.
And I do have a red line later on.
Oh, you did flip that C and C and B, okay.
Right? All right, well, I'm at a disadvantage because I don't have the latest map, so. Moving along the, the table of areas. And in that table of areas. And under the category of proposed lot two. Has, you know, the total area, the area of the flag, the portion without the flag. And then it has existing total roofed coverage of 4,517 square feet. There are no structures on lot two. Unless there is a structure and it's not shown on the map. There's an old truck body. And a dirt walkway.
It's the same number that's listed under lot three, so it's a cut and paste error.
Okay, so anyway, that can just be
eliminated.
Eliminated or revised for the next, in the next iteration. Okay. I mean, I think that's, that's essentially it. Though there was another, there was a question about SECR. And the board did did a secret review and adopted a resolution on the previous sketch plan, which is essentially the same except for, you know, the access ways becoming portions of lots instead of easements. So I think that it would still apply. I don't think that we have to reopen SECR, but maybe Beth, if you have any ideas on that, do we have to do it again?
No, I don't think you need to do it again because the access points haven't changed. I don't think it's a substantial change that would require you redoing SECR.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the map is essentially the same and we're just creating one vacant lot. As, you know, in the three lot subdivision, two of the lots are already improved.
What I do like about this new map from the previous one is that we're dealing now with two flagpoles instead of right of ways. Kevin McGowan had some concerns about whether or not the county would accept landlocked lots that are accessed through right of ways. And this is done now properly. I think this is a good change.
One other thing that the butch be aware of is that the subdivision needs to be approved. Using acreage averaging. And, and that's because there are more flag lots than what would typically be permitted. That's one of the reasons why the blooms submitted a another map and that shows a cul-de-sac. That would provide access to the three lots.
I sent, I sent that to all of you guys earlier in the week.
And, and you know, that was just showing, that was just a method to show or a map to show that they could provide access if they built a road, but nobody really wants a cul-de-sac road built here. So we, because of that, we're able to review this using the acreage averaging provision in the town code.
Great. So I think we're, we're ready to proceed with a sketch plan resolution in December, next meeting. Unless anyone on the board has some concerns, but I think that we can start working on that. I will, in the interim, send it to the fire commissioners for their comments. And to the Suffolk County Planning Commission for their comments. I think they will come back and say it's really a matter of local jurisdiction. As they do on all of their proposals that we send them. But I think it's fairly, but we'll get that part going. We'll have the resolution drafted and we'll vote on it next. And you already have SECR, so you certainly can start the health department application again with, with this.
Another two years.
This one, this one should go a little faster, I hope.
So you have to subtract 20. Okay. I would know.
You can do it the next round. I don't need it. We don't need now. Well, actually, well, why you, I have you here. You mentioned to me outside the post office that you were considering, or the IGA, that you were considering taking a house from a neighboring property and putting it on lot two. Is that?
It's a long shot.
Oh, so you don't want to talk about it now?
I can't, I don't believe we can talk about it because we have an active building.
Well, I was gonna.
I don't know what the code says about temporarily storing a building.
So that's, that's where I want to go. I have, we have Joe and Beth here and I was going to ask them. The blooms may have an opportunity to be able to, a neighbor wants to tear down a house theoretically. They may be able to pick it up and move it on to their property. If they have a house up on cribbing. Will that muck with the, their application in any way? Or do they have to finalize the subdivision before they move the house on to their property? Wouldn't be connected to anything, would just be sitting on cribbing. Nothing more different than that truck body that's there now.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Joe. I was just wondering if that would create an issue with the health department.
Well, that's why.
Yeah.
Maybe not if it's not connected to.
No sanitary system, no well, no access, just storage, storing the house on the property.
Then what is it? Is it a, is it still a house? I mean, if it's not hooked up to anything. But then can you have a, an accessory structure without a principal residence? I would have to look at the code and it might be a building inspector question.
It wouldn't be an accessory structure because you couldn't really use it. It's just a.
Maybe if you put a license plate on it.
Put some wheels on it.
I don't think that I would show it on the map that goes to the health department.
Since it's a theoretical, maybe we should wait until.
Well, it's just a matter of timing. The neighbor has been very patient with us. With this 20 foot wide dirt driveway that has taken me three years. We're all rejoicing that I now have my 20 foot wide dirt driveway that took three years. We've repeated that phrase. Not, not of your fault. And he, we're congratulating ourselves and said, fine, now I can, I can demolish that house. And I said, well, you don't want to demolish it, I'll take it. He's eager. Get it up in the air, leave out of his way so he can build another house. Now I offered a place to store the house. Hoping that the timing of this would kind of coincide. Obviously, it's not going to be perfect. If I had a building lot right now, I'd be getting building to do what they're talking about.
I guess the question is what, what exists now? Is it unsubdivided? It's one lot. So it's one big lot. So for the purposes of now, in storing it, it could be considered to be an accessory structure. Not a dwelling, not an accessory dwelling, but an accessory structure.
I mean, it could, I, I want to spend like three or four days looking at the builder code. But it seems to me that maybe you could do it as a temp, get a permit for a temporary structure. Non, you know, non habitable space. Certainly wouldn't be habitable. Yeah. Certainly wouldn't even be working on it or, you know, it's obviously going to be a foundation. The foundation would get to where the water mill sits where the rail and stuff. It's just an speed to get it out of, out of the yard of my neighbor into a place where I can use it.
This might be a question for Matt to check with his contacts at the health department and see if they'll have issues with it. Personally, I don't have an issue. Pass the building.
It would be a shame to, you know, demolish something that's usable. Just because for him it's probably easier to start from scratch.
And this is the primary structure on the old Dunbar.
Yeah. Which is not a big house.
No, it's small.
It's just a one bedroom.
1400 feet. It's just fit between a couple of big trees to get them into mine. You are allowed to move, near, as long as you move a structure with, that's already, I believe that's already permitted, you know, has some sort of a CFO or CFC in New York state. You're allowed to move it within the state. And it doesn't have to meet the current building. It just has to meet the code for a relocated building. But it's not really a, until it's turned into a dwelling or something. I'm not sure where. I mean, obviously, my intention, once it's, once I have a building lot, once I have water, once I have a foundation building permit, obviously, I'm gonna, I'm gonna renovate the house to bring it up to code. I mean, you know, 100% on that. I don't want to live it. Or have anyone live it. It's going to be.
Arthur, can you please come speak to the microphone? Thank you. Beth, I think she cannot hear you.
I think I've probably, I've said pretty much what I wanted to say anyways. It's just going to be ultimately a house for one of our three children. And that's the, the reason we're doing this subdivision anyway. And I'm, my intention is never to have a house that's not up to code because that's not what I would do.
So I just think the next steps would be to ask Matt to check his contacts at the health department. We will I'll ask Reed to do all the research. But in my mind, I don't see a problem with a temporary stored house because it's not usable in any capacities and accessories. It's just storage, no different than a trailer being stored on your front.
It's going to be six feet in the air on cribbing and it's not going to be connected to electricity or anything. That's, that's the, the long range plan.
We are going, you can start your health department application. We're going to vote on the resolution, sketch plan resolution and forward it to the fire commissioners and to the committee, Suffolk County Planning Commission for their review.
So I'll send it off the map.
Yeah. With, with Joe's memo.
Yeah, okay.
I just emailed.
The only thing in Joe's, it's all the things that Joe's memo enumerated. The B and C zone, we already prepared that.
Yeah.
We noticed that right there.
The, the mapping things can, you don't have to do them right now. You don't have to hey hammer to make them. You can, when we do the next, so next submission, just please have those corrected for the next mission.
The only thing left is that dimension where you forgot to subtract the 20.
And Joe's memo also has, it has the old standard sanitary system images on there. Details, we're all requiring, all these will require new IA systems. So those details may have to be changed, but that will trickle through in the health department process. Thank you for coming in.
All right, well, thanks so much.
Great, appreciate it.
Back to applications, the case of gas application, we extended. We're waiting for the final application to be submitted and they have until the 13th of April. We just extended the base and Haberl lot line adjustments. The white major subdivision, we're waiting for the conditions of the resolutions to be met. Bill Frivogo submitted some declarations and covenants and restrictions. I skimmed through them, but I would really leave that to Beth to say whether they're adequate, sufficient or need to be modified. I don't know, Beth, have you had a chance to take a peek at the, the, what Bill put together?
I started looking, I didn't get all the way through them yet.
Okay. Okay, so we'll have more on that later. Bill, I see you here. Do you want to make a statement as, I know you like to sometimes. You just haven't, haven't got to it yet.
I know you all enjoy hearing from us as much as we enjoy being there. So first of all, we just wanted to thank the planning board again for the favorable action on the resolution on October 12th. We know it was a very difficult process from beginning to end. And we appreciate the significant effort that all the members of the planning board put into it. And that Joe and Beth put into the review of the plan and the drafting of the resolution. As I told Ian in an email update yesterday, we're making pretty good progress in setting up the closings on lots eight and nine. I won't bore you with the details, but it seems like the county and the town are all moving in the right direction. And so we wanted to make sure that the proposed releases of the HOA covenants and the town covenants were generally acceptable to the planning board and to its council. So that's why I sent them to Ian yesterday. So that's what I would suggest is whenever you get through them, if you have any questions or comments, just contact me directly. We're essentially ready to put the final signatures on them as soon as we get the go ahead from the planning board from the county and from the town. And if there's anything that you need from us at any stage in the process relating to our closings, you all know where to find us.
Thank, great, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And then the last application currently open is the Robert subdivision. We're still waiting on Matt Sherman to provide us with proof of access over the right of way. And he hasn't gotten there yet. In other business, we prepared a calendar for next year. I sent it around late today, so I don't know if everyone got it. That's basically the days. It's, it follows the second Tuesday in every month. The only conflict that I saw was potentially November 8th, which is election day, which is a holiday, which means this building is closed. Um, we could push it to Wednesday the ninth. But the ZBA meets on Wednesday.
Yeah, we typically, when there is such situation, we typically move it to the following Tuesday. So instead of eight, it would be fifteen, if that would work.
Is there a problem with the ninth?
Uh, uh, there, there would be ZBA meeting at this point.
Okay, so one more week to the fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll correct that, um, and then send it around.
About Thursday, the, the tenth.
I don't like to interfere with other nights, just because let me see what's typically on different Tuesdays, because on Thursdays evenings, there are WQIs meetings.
You're better off sticking with the same night, usually have it, just pushing it the week.
Yeah, that's, that's what typically the procedures.
Okay.
Different committees and, uh, yeah, Tuesdays, there are only town board work sessions and planning boards. So.
Hi, so the Tuesday, the fifteenth, and I'll just have everyone take another look at it and we'll vote this in. We have to vote on this in December, so it can be advertised prior to our January meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Um, you, you want to talk about the open meetings? You said you want the memo was.
Uh, yeah, I sent the memo around, um, and honestly, I think the planning board falls under that practicality clause. Because that's, uh, we, anything that is on our agenda, if you read it, um, should be posted online. But we have such a slow moving things and, uh, there are basically no updates on it or updated correspondence, which we do not post. Um, that wouldn't be covered by, um, and the wetlands aren't really our applications or special permits. Um, they are being discussed, but I believe these should be posted on the town board.
So our applications that are on the, the share point or whatever it's called, um, does the public have access to that?
No.
Just town?
Just town.
So are we supposed to be putting all this material for of applications on a public part of the website?
Exactly. Um, anything would have been discussed. So what?
Any like subdivision stuff, like little subdivision application?
Yeah, well, let's say, I do it with the zoning board for quite a while. Like, we have application, but that's very quick process, right? We receive application, I post it, it's there for two months and I take it down, right? But let's say Blooms are on the agenda for three years. Um, so there is a practicality clause. I, I don't want it.
Beth, what is, what are your thoughts of this, um, open meetings and publicizing everything?
I would say most jurisdictions do put their app, especially since COVID and everything went to Zoom. They have been putting their applications on, um, on the web where people can access it from home. I know East Hampton does it, East Hampton Village does it. Um, I think Sag Harbor or Southampton. So I think a lot of the towns and villages are doing that. Um, especially with the Zoom option, it allows people to not have to come into the, uh, town clerk's office or whichever office to view files or anything like that. Um, I think staff has found that it helps them in the long run because they're not, if there's a application where it's kind of a hot button issue, they're constantly having to deal with public. Now the public can actually just look on their own. Um, so, um, I tend to think it's a good thing. Um, and so I would encourage if the board could get, you know, at least they can't get everything, get, you know, the, the plan itself, um, any memos, things like that.
So any resolutions, sketch plan resolution, final resolutions, extensions? Uh, notice from the school, notice from Cablevision?
Well, it, it depends on how far, I mean, if you're presenting, if there's a subdivision application before the board one night and you want to have the application itself or the, um, what do you call it? The plan available online, that could be, um, you know, something, you, you would want to figure out what.
But all that other stuff, Joe's memos, all that other stuff should be up.
I mean, ideally, you would have everything on there, but I think you could also make it more, um, what you think is important.
Yeah, I think, go ahead.
The one thing I was going to say is just that there's been a lot of discussion in the building department about redacting information that might be considered private uh, from information that's released so that if you have phone numbers, addresses, you know, home addresses and things, that that could be, yeah, that that could be a real issue.
So maybe then, as Beth's saying, just the site plan and not, not the actual application and all that information.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know there's, there was also a discussion, I thought, that SharePoint was eventually going to have kind of a public.
There, there is a plan that in some future year or decade or century, we'll have a digital public library for that, but, uh, it's nowhere near, nowhere near.
Because there, there was a lot of discussion too about, you know, in situations like, maybe there's a divorce and one person has a, uh, you know, uh, order of, you know, restraining order, something that they don't want their info, you know, their home information available, something like that. So there was a whole discussion about it, which we were told, don't release anything. Uh, this was pretty recent, and I think it came about because of some of the lawsuits that are going on now. So I'm just saying, it might be a little tricky.
Is there a, a public portion of our, uh, committee page that we could post stuff on?
The website, you mean? Yeah, um, well, let me show.
We just put, put subdivision, Bloom subdivision map, the finer subdivision map.
Let me share the screen as, uh, you, Ian, might be familiar with the, the zoning board, right? So in the zoning board, there are all current applications listed. Now, the same thing I started to do with the, let's say, uh, the waterways, right? Um, but it's, it's complete application. I don't really subtract anything from there. The denial that it's, it's, as it comes, that goes. And, uh, in this case, I was thinking about this, um, as Beth says, like, the, the East Hampton probably does it all. Um, it's a gigantic burden on, uh, the media department to post every single change and updates on it. Um.
Because, you know, these maps, all the, the white map changed constantly, um, blue maps.
I mean, I, I am the.
Different than they gave us a couple of days ago.
Exactly. So I am the, the, you know, I am the media department. I am like, I can do it like right away, basically, from whatever I receive. But, uh, this is, or is it so slow moving or so quick moving? That I just don't see practicality in it. And, and especially, like, we were thinking a while ago about uploading all the meetings of all the committees online. And then we were debating, like, those, all those meetings are so poorly attended that there is not really a value to post it online when no one ever attends this. So, and so now I'm basing my thinking of the same thing. How many foils or requests do I get for the planning board? Who is really interested in these things? And I really know there is only one person, which is Bloom's neighbor, that files a fuller request every Wednesday, right? After every planning board meeting. And, uh, there's just a really one person who really wants anything, any, any, is interested in any information of the planning board. So I, I think it's, uh, we really could be covered under the practicality clause that, uh, wasn't that.
So Beth, I didn't know about this person boiling after every meeting. Is this the first, do we have to worry about this in any way or?
No, I mean, as long as we're responding to the foils.
Yeah.
Would it, would it be practical to put the site plan as submitted within the application?
Yes, perhaps, yeah.
That contains a lot of information and it's very informative to the neighbors and the community at large.
Like the, or, the, the original application, the, what they submitted at the very beginning. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, you know, if, if you do the fact that it's fast moving and ever changing.
Yeah.
Then the thing that might be subsequently filed at some time, now that I got you to say it's not so bad, I'll add one more thing. And that is the, the final approved version. And that seems to serve, um, a lot of purposes. It serves to keep people informed.
Yeah, but the final approved version, that means that it's of our agenda at that point.
Yeah, well, I say final approved, at some point in time, um, it is on our agenda.
The sketch, uh, plans, sketch, the proof's sketch plan would be posted.
Okay.
And then their resubmission, when we do the final, and that can be posted until they, they submit the, um, the proof, but basically, once we do that final resolution, it's done. We're just waiting for them to get paperwork and then it goes off our agenda.
Right, well, I was looking to capture something that is the end result rather than, you know, where, where it began, because I think that's another important, uh,
added.
Yeah, but that, that's what you, that would be a permanent archive at that point. It wouldn't be, uh, a gen, this, this is not what is covered with this open meeting. Well, this is what we're discussing, the open meeting. Well, what are we discussing should be available to the public, um, document wise.
Then, then I'll stay with just the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, we're, you know, I know a lot of the offices are having to hire people because of all the foiling that's going on now. And sometimes the foiling seems frivolous. And it seems to me that, you know, we got to be careful not to have, uh, some unintended consequences in terms of, you know, having to hire someone just to put a bunch of, make a bunch of information more easily available that is available if people try. And becomes, you know, if you not only have to input that information to, you know, the internet in some fashion, but also have to redact it, it can become a really extraordinary amount of labor.
The only thing that was called under our curvy would be the, um, subdivision, the lot line adjustments, right?
Exactly. I mean, we technically would discuss them, but they're, uh, so they are in front of us.
Right.
But they will be posted somewhere on a different space, uh, on a website. It would be under the town board. Um, therefore, I, I don't think we need to post them there and there. So we are covered there. Like technically, uh, we should, should pose that open meetings law memorandum that we're currently discussing. We, that should be posted there as a part of our discussion tonight. Like, that's what I'm more thing of, like, posting that entire applications. Um, or we can, like, come up with a procedure, when, what point should we post it? The first that is submitted, then the sketch plan, then.
Uh, I'm, I'm of the favor more just to put the current map up on the website and not the more technical information that people don't understand, which has personal information on it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's more of my opinion, um.
I mean, it seems to me maybe that the important thing is to let people know what's being discussed. And if there's something that they're interested in and it's relevant, then they can make the effort to go seek out the information. But not to have this onus of having to have all the information.
There at every point.
At every point, because then it kind of defeats the purpose. Nobody, nobody wants to go through too much information. Nobody wants to have to do it. Just make it available. It's not, you're not obligated to, you know, fill yourself to. Easily.
Okay. Um, so the last thing on my agenda right now is this discussion of wetlands, the current wetlands code. And, um, I, I read through the information you provided us, Michael. And to me, it seems like Shelter Island, this was two documents. The one, um, more helpful one was the environmental law institute document, and I felt that was, um, or of a general discretion, discussion of towns and suggesting that they should have wetland buffers, uh, and codes, which Shelter Island already has a very strong wetlands code. And, um, it just reinforced to me that we're, we're doing the right thing right now. Ours tends to be based on New York State DEC standards, which were vetted by the DEC in the seventies, eighties and nineties. Um, this document, you know, tells about, a lot of it has to do with freshwater wetlands, which we rarely deal with on Shelter Island.
Here's the map of the freshwater wetlands on Shelter Island. And it's, it's, it's really quite, quite extensive. So the fact that we're not dealing with them leads me to conclude that we may be missing some of them.
I'd be surprised if I see, we've been doing these for years, ten years, I've maybe seen one come through in those ten years.
And then maybe it's possible that it's a matter of mapping and not acknowledging the relationship of these properties to the wetlands.
I, I think, I think.
We've had some. Okay.
So we don't have any sense of the amount of properties on these because a lot of this is reserved.
There's one up there.
The one I remember is Corner Shorewood and, um, right across from.
But I'm, I'm happy or, I mean, certainly we should be up to date and up to best practices with regard to both freshwater wetlands and title and title.
Wetlands are codified in.
And, and title.
Yeah, this next one we're doing is freshwater.
Yeah, but I, you know, if, if, if we're saying we're in good shape with regard to this, that would be a misunderstanding, a misstatement. And I can give you the science and bring you up to speed as to why I feel that we're not following best practice in an area which is a primary concern to the island. One is water quality, um, freshwater quality. And the other one is the conditions of our, of our bays and surrounding water. And what we're doing, I mean, one, one great point of reference is if we look at the near shore overlay, because that imagines, um, what should be if the land wasn't previously developed. It basically, let me, let me finish because it'll go smoother if I can complete my thoughts rather than addressing questions. Save your, save your questions or comments for the end. But all of the science and all the planning guides support the importance of natural buffers. And they also support the importance of, um, allowing natural buffers to reoccur or creating, creating buffers by planting, planting out the buffers. We currently are not using that tool, which is probably easily supported by science, more effective than the tools that we are, um, using in terms of quote unquote mitigation. The buffers are the single most important thing we can do in terms of filtering water. And I think we've gone on record as saying, no, that's not the case. That buffers are arbitrary and there's no science behind it.
I, I disagree with that statement at all completely.
Yeah, I think the, the thing.
Let me just, the reason why I say that.
Let's, let, we, you asked us to, you asked us to give some comments.
Well, here's, 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 here's the quote. And I, I don't, like, look, the point of this is not to be argumentative. The point of this is to get us up to speed on water quality tools that we have at our disposal.
But, but I think in the greater scheme of things, Shelter Island is way advanced on that. And that these added suggestions that are quite often come at us are these, um, oh, that sounds great. Let's put it in place, but it has no real scientific basis.
Well, specifically the question of buffers, this is the letter. The applications of these buffers has seemed to us arbitrary and not based in scientific or empirical data. That's a quote.
Because, right, but that's, that's, that's specifically talking about the twenty five foot additionally, right?
No, 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 we're talking, this is.
We're talking about.
He's talking about seventy five. Okay, there's, this thing.
That's the DEC right there. That's got, that's not an issue.
This is talking about two different types of buffers. There's the, the distance buffer of seventy five. This is talking about two different types of buffers. There's the the distance buffer of seventy five and the additional twenty five. And then there's the physical plantings that some applications applicants have to put in right in front of their bulkhead or in front of wetlands. That's called the vegetative buffer. But they they're being dealt with here synonymously. What we were coming there.
Not the case.
What we were talking about there is sometimes. An applicant is forced to put in a ten foot buffer and other times twenty five foot buffer. And there is no, there's no reason because there's for the description.
That's also not the case.
And in many cases.
It's the only reason is our lack of knowledge about buffers.
May I say, may I say something?
May I say something? I I'll give you the data. I I, you know, I'll I'll give you, this was done by Noah, by by Noah. Um and it talks about the science behind buffers and their effect on filtration and the distances.
I'm not disagreeing.
We're not, we're not, I'm not disagreeing with the notion that buffers are helpful. What I'm saying is that. The twenty five foot buffer is an arbitrary number.
The twenty five foot is not a buffer, which which.
The vegetative buffer from seventy five to.
Uh the adjacent regulated area, the seventy five to twenty five.
Right.
Is a regulated area.
Yes.
Not a buffer. The.
I thought it was additionally regular, anyway.
The zero to seventy five is the actual buffer.
Right.
So we have around Shelter Island, based on the D E C science, which is locally studied and locally um assembled. A seventy five foot buffer, and that's where that data came from.
Correct.
The vegetative buffer that some applicants put against the bulkhead or against uh when not bulkheaded against the beach. That is something completely different. It has its own purpose too, and it's part of the bigger buffer.
But it's really not different. What it is, it is restoring the buffer to a functional state. Right now, we have turf grass, which has no value in terms of filtration. In most cases, running all the way up to the wetlands.
Turf grass actually does have some value in in slowing down water, surface waters. And it's the perccability of the soil underneath where water goes through and drains down.
Well, what here here's here's the situation. The buffers. That have vegetation on them. Function. Effectively. The turf grass is subject to. Fertilizer. It's subject to mowing. Um it doesn't in any way support. Um native inhabitants in terms of, when I say that, I mean uh wildlife. Turf grass is mono um. Doesn't support, you know, insects in terms of what a a natural vegetative buffer will do. It's basically monoculture is the word I was looking for. It has very, very. Little or no value, which is scientifically recognized. It's more of an adverse impact on the environment. Than it is a positive in back impact. And it's pretty well understood by whoever wrote our our overlay. Because our overlay basically says that you have to make, not only you have to um have a natural. Buffer for seventy five feet, and it also goes on to say that buildings must be one hundred feet away. Now, why does it say that? That goes to the purpose of the twenty five foot buffer. Recognizing how important the buffers are for filtration. Recognizing all the things that you could do at right adjacent to a buffer to to. Compromise its compromise its effectiveness. There's no way that you can build. A house or you can have impervious surfaces, including pavers and stones. Which are set with open joints. That all creates runoff. So the idea with the twenty five foot zone is is not to create another buffer. It is to create an environment which is regulated, the purpose of which is to prevent damage to the buffer. Now, the reason why I'm so passionate about this is buffers. I'm sorry.
Nothing, go ahead.
Buffers are is as important to our. Litigation. Of construction that is harmful to the environment as all the other things that are required. Such as a retention base. That's to control water, but it has no impact at all on filtration. The buffer is the one element that provides filtration. And what what we have here is we have. You know, if you look at the science on this and the engineering, we have steep slope sites, which we. Are saying the standard for that, the gold standard of this board is a ten foot buffer. And in some instances, we double it. To fifteen feet, and that's a good thing. And that.
I think that's that's not A, that's not fair, because there are a lot of other factors that go into it. The.
Give me one with a site that is in any way uh scientific or engineering based.
The thing that I get from this is that one size does not fit. And they they go they go into a great deal of uh of uh. Uh detail about different situations. Uh slope is very important. There are a whole, a whole bunch of it. And so what I get from this is. And it's a he they say specifically. Uh in adopting a buffer and divine defining its dimensions, the local government must rely on good science, both to achieve effective results and to meet any legal challenges. A large scientific literature examines effective buffer size for water quality and wildlife habitat. And. It says, however, the buffer size is necessary to provide a particular level of function depends on the functions of the wetland. And we have very different situations. And although when I came to the planning board, I was gung ho about the twenty five foot additionally regulated area and buffers. My feeling is is that we have very different situations. And what I see empirically in the field is that. We have other, there are other issues that are demonstrably relevant, like irrigating uh lawns. You know, fertilizer.
You're told not to enforce.
Which which we can't enforce because the the laws are written so poorly. And this is, I'm all in favor of buffers, but I think that it really has to be. It has to be tailored to the specific situations.
Well.
And I'm I'm just reluctant at this sort of feel good thing of.
This is not feel good. This is.
Well, there are a lot of people who are approaching it, not scientifically, and just in with very broad.
We've been having this discussion for years now, not just this first conversation with Michael Shokin. This has been going on for years.
We're so far off and behind on buffers.
I disagree.
Oh hardly.
Um.
Sure.
Exactly what is it that you would like to see?
I would like us to. Okay, I would like to see us rec- one, recognize the importance of offers as a filtration device. And. You I would like us, understanding that there are a lot of different circumstances and the bandwidth and the knowledge. Of myself and everybody on this board is limited. I would like us to follow the basic simplistic guidelines, which are in the planner's guide to wetlands. For local governments. And basically what that gives you. And that as well as the thing I recently sub sent around, and I can. Summarize it for you.
Learn how to plant a plant.
That's 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 not irrelevant. That's, you know.
I mean.
Okay.
Let me get to the basics of this. There's. And that is, it's a, I gave a simple document. Because the tolerance of or the capabilities of the building committee of. Building community, you know, it has to be boiled down to something which is not that complicated. But basically, what it says. Is a vegetative buffer in order to be effective, the minimum dis- distance. In this standard is twenty five feet. That's the minimum.
And this is from New Hampshire.
This is this is from shore.
This one, New Hampshire.
Okay.
But we're already, but we're we're talking about regulating a hundred.
No, because they're not, they don't even have total wetlands in New Hampshire.
Wait a minute. First of all, it's also signed onto by Maine. And what it gives us. The the point about the, what we have right now is a barren, unfunctional condition within the buffer. And that is turf grass.
The stormwater collection from roofs that we put directly into the ground with dry wells has no no mitigating effect.
It has no mitigating effect with regard to filtration. It's a collection and re infusion into the soil.
Re infusion through the soil. Even this article that we read said that nitrates are only removed by subsurface flow. Not surface flow, subsurface flow, which is exactly what we do with the dry wells. It's what we do with the sanitary tanks.
Are removed by vegetative wetlands.
It's a subsurface flow.
Removed in a number of ways. One is by the plants absorbing it and using it and becoming part of plant. The other is. An aerobic bacteria that live in the soil, break it down. So those are the two primary ways that nitrates get used. So either it's absorbed by plant matter or it's broken down by biology. Otherwise, it runs off.
Let me ask a different, a different question to everyone here. What is our role here?
No, I'm still confused as to exactly what your goal is. Do you want the entire seventy five foot to be planted? Is that what you're going for?
My my, okay, I'll tell you what my, okay, I appreciate. My my goal is to first recognize that turf grass isn't doing anything for us. It's just giving homeowners the opportunity to pollute.
Okay.
By.
Beyond that.
Okay, none none of whom believes that, but okay. Okay. I I'll I'll give you the science on turf grass as well. It's not even a question of what people believe. It's actually a question of what is scientifically sustainable. It's not like hearsay. And turf grass, you know, basically is is a polluting factor to the environment.
If someone fertilizes, but we're not supposed to fertilize.
Okay.
Right?
But you you asked a question, what am I getting at? I'm getting at. Not turning, first of all. I I raised the the issue of the overlay. To give you kind of a point of point of reference as that's the equivalent of. The the new and current code with regard to. Development next to. Um our coastline. And that describes to you what is the ideal and preferred condition. And the ideal and preferred condition is a seventy five foot buffer. And if at certain point, if somebody comes in with a house and it's eighty percent new. What do you do? You know, at a certain point, it kicks over to up to the standards of new of new construction. I'm not proposing that, but I'm just giving you that as as an analogy.
We have a standard seventy five foot buffer.
We have a, we have a standard seventy five.
Seventy five foot.
We have a standard seventy five foot buffer. So what specifically what I'm looking to do is. Look at the science in terms of slopes.
Mm hmm.
And say, this is what should be turned into.
Which should be more heavily vegetated.
Which should be vegetated.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, so.
One one thing I was gonna say quickly, to me, as someone who has to enforce this. One of the big problems we have, the biggest problem we have is that the code is written so poorly. That it's completely contradictory and unenforceable. The first thing I would do is address. The fact that the text of the code is contradicted by. The chart that there's a thing permitted, non permitted. That would be a very simple solution that I think would be. Relatively not uh, you know, not open to argument.
But what I'm what I'm suggesting is.
May I finish just please? The other thing I would say, it seems to me that one function that the town could could implement. One of the biggest things I see is whenever a um. Whenever a property has a N J letter from the D E C because of basically the technicality that there was a bulkhead or other manmade uh.
Exactly.
Structure. Uh. The town goes, the town. Could use the the data that in theory is scientific, that the D E C is uh generated and say, okay, we're gonna enforce this. As though the D E C had jurisdiction and we'll just adopt there.
Uh Joe and Beth, I just realized that you may don't maybe not wanna hear us go ahead like this and talk about. Yeah. Around wetlands codes in such a theoretical ass way. So if you'd like to stay on, please do so. Otherwise, um enjoy your evenings and uh thank you. But I leave it up to you.
Okay, good night. Good night.
The other thing I was gonna say is that, you know, the biggest problem we're having. Or in the in the near shore overlay is more and more having non potable water because irrigation has salted the wells. And if we, if there are so many things that are just empirically obvious to me, like. You know, do something, you know, prevent irrigation. Uh, you know, prevent irrigation. Because more and more, we're having situations where there there are groups of houses that don't have. Have wells and almost invariably, it's because of irrigation going wrong.
Well, let's stay on 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 buffers and I I agree with you that irrigation is 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 a problem. But the the point I'm I'm making is that Shelter Island is not. In the same place other places are with regard to. Utilizing that seventy five feet for a purpose. The seventy five feet is doing us absolutely no good. It's probably doing us more harm than than good.
How do you know it's not doing any good?
How do I know it's not doing any good?
What's the science behind what you're.
The science behind that I didn't bring, but I will bring the science on uh. Turf. Um.
You know, you're also just assuming that everyone has lawn in that seventy five feet when a lot of people.
A lot of it, yeah, a lot of it is native grass.
But I guess the question is what?
In my mind, there's two things. Let's put it this way. If if you say, okay, we'll reduce it to fifty feet of non turf. Then can we build to fifty feet? Or are you saying that the full seventy five feet has to be non turf?
No, I'm I'm not fiddling with the code with regard to the seventy five feet. I'm leaving it exactly where it is. I'm just saying.
Saying the seventy five feet has to be non turf, right to seventy?
No, I didn't say that either.
Okay.
What I'm I exactly saying is that we're not using the seventy five feet to any. Purpose, and we are suggesting and utilizing buffers that are below the standard. And what I would like this board to recognize and come up to speed on is. How effective. A vegetative buffer is and put that in our toolbox along with other forms of mitigation and utilize it.
But if you, if if the code were made to be coherent and enforceable. Then that then clearing would be prevented in that seventy five foot buffer. Uh as it is, there are all sorts of regulations, you know, you can't cut a tree down larger than four inches.
Four feet.
Uh what?
At four feet.
Uh no, it's actually above that. Um.
It's four inches of four feet. It's fifteen feet for Vista.
Right, right.
So.
So anyway, there, in other words, there, you you know, if you if it if you drop a tree that's dead, because you can only drop a tree in the seventy five foot. Uh regulated, you know, but wetlands.
Dangerous.
If it's dangerous or if it's dead. Um you're not allowed to drag it out. You have to cut it up and carry it up. There are a lot of, there are a lot of protections in that area in theory. So I'm just a little bit confused. I thought we were talking originally about.
What we're talking, what we're talking about.
I I thought we were talking about is the fall. In all the applications.
In all the applications that are before us, we have applications that have turf grass extending all the way to either the back wetlands. Uh, when I say wetlands, all the way to the shoreline or to a bulkhead. No, it's not a hundred percent of the applica- It's not a hundred percent, but it's a large area subject to betterment. And in the same technique that the billing department uses, when you're dealing with an existing set of circumstances that don't need code, the des- the desire is to start they moving in the direction of needing code and best practice, which is a vegetative buffer. Now, what am I suggesting is I'm suggesting this as a mitigating feature in addition to the other things that we do. Yeah, but we do one that is our standard and that's the engineer that I heard this from presenting to the town board was incorrect. Our standard is 10 feet.
With the town doesn't have a standard.
Don't have a standard.
Okay, so why don't we adopt a standard based upon science and best practice? What is the resistance to that?
So wait a minute. So what you're saying is that if they have turf grass, they would have to replant it as some sort of native plantings?
Well, they, there's a variety of ways in which it could be done, but the answer is in some way, it would be a restorative, uh, natural buffer rather than turf grass.
So yeah, they'd have to plant native plantings.
There's a couple of ways in which you can do it. One is.
Rip out the grass and build sand dunes. Put some native grasses on sand dunes.
That's a, that's an informant of.
That's been done.
Mm-hmm.
Be, like, that was a serious comment. I thought we were.
That was a serious comment. It's been done.
But the, they can allow native, uh, grass, native grasses to occur. They can plant them.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we're, we're dealing with basically runoff, which contain, contains pollutants in it. And we're using, suggesting do we install a filter which is common and.
And you're assuming that the pollutants are fertilizers and, and nitrates applied to the lawns where a lot of people were not supposed to do it. We're not allowed to do it by code and, which I know most people don't do.
I think if, I think if they banned, I think if they banned irrigation, you might find that people go to natural plantings out of, because all of a sudden they don't have turf grass. You know, the problem is now that they're, you know, people are dumping fertilizer. In other words, the lawns are continuing because it's possible to keep them going. Um, I'm all in favor, I'm all in favor of, you know, replanting the 75 feet as, you know, as a, a buffer and using native plantings.
Would be great, but it would be proportionate.
But I would say that.
We're told to be proportionate.
I would say that it's going to be a very, very tough sell uh, to the people who have properties on, you know, the.
This is, this is not a code change. This is a mitigating feature.
Right.
When somebody puts in a pool or a deck at the, and says, you know, obviously this is creating runoff. And this is a way to take that runoff. Let me give you an example. The average house, shingled house, you know, it starts out beautifully, whatever color it comes out of the box, and then it starts to silver and it turns dark and then the power washers show up. And what do you, what kinds of chemicals are they using to power wash? People wash their cars. People fertilize their gardens. These are all things which happen as a course of life. And these are people that are sitting next to the bays that have no scallops in them. And this is a practice which all of the surrounding communities are utilizing except us.
And we're on.
So let's, let me say that I think the reason, um, and I, I can't speak for him and I don't know if Jerry will chime in, but he wanted us to have more of a discussion of what the CAC is going after. The CAC doesn't want any construction in or guidelines from the town as to what could be constructed in the 75 to 100 foot setback.
That's what I thought we were.
That's what I thought we were discussing. I didn't, and, and we call that the vegetative buffer, the zero to 75 and the adjacent regulated area.
Well, I'm on record as saying, and you were pretty hot about it, as me disagreeing with our position on buffers. That's, that's what this is about. Okay.
I think you must have misinterpreted.
Yes. Let me read the letter because I don't think it's that subject to interpretation.
The, the discussion of the buffer, the planted plantings is only a line at the end of the, our memo.
We have no problem with the 75 foot regulated area, like the 75 foot buffers on that shouldn't get touched and no one said it should be.
Zebo or a little fire pit up to 100 square feet is acceptable. Um, I allow them to use their property somehow as they're legally allowed to. Um, I think the, the whole concept of, of going to the town board for a wetlands permit, which is a review, uh, in my mind, you can't do anything beyond the 75. It's the review of work between the 75 and 100. And that's what we're talking about.
If you want to talk about that, I'm happy to talk about that as well, but let me just summarize. What I'm suggesting is the 75 foot buffer in the, in our own code in the overlay district is, is basically described as, as a native, undisturbed natural buffer. We're dealing with properties that are developed and they have turf grass and they have no natural buffer. People are coming in and they're asking for approvals of things which require mitigation. We are not fully understanding the value, the science and the engineering behind vegetative buffers. I like to put that in our toolbox.
I think, I think that we're all quite aware of the value of vegetative buffers. I think the issue is, and it's a reasonable thing to consider. The issue is, do we require re-vegetation of areas that are already cleared in that 75 to 100?
And the answer to that would be yes.
Well, the answer, no. The question is still, how do we determine exactly the width, the type of vegetation, when we're going to require it, how we're going to require it? Because the science is very variable. Even the EPA doesn't have a standard for the appropriate width of a vegetated planted buffer because it depends upon soil conditions, the type of vegetation, the slope. There are so many factors that the EPA doesn't even have a standard. So.
But does that doesn't?
We can develop one, but.
But cause us to be dismissive of it.
No, no one's saying we are.
To sort of do, do some averaging in order to take advantage of it.
Agreed. And that's my, that's my takeaway from this. But I, but I thought originally that we were here to talk about the.
Yeah, and I thought that was.
The CAC's recommendation.
Really, and like Jerry wanted to talk.
It seems with further development, a tool of.
Right. We just need to develop the tool. We just don't have that.
People are on, it seems like people are on board with that. Or at least some people are. Reed, you, you seem.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, I think that mitigation is worth considering. I think that, to me, my understanding, and this is where I differ with, with, what I'm hearing from the CAC. My understanding of that additionally regulated area was not that, not that development was banned in there, but that it was a permit required so that you could horse trade mitigation.
That vegetative buffer on the wet.
Yes, you could, you could, you could ask for, you could horse trade mitigation, which seems like a reasonable function of that additionally regulated area.
I, can I just put another idea in there why the 25 additional feet is, is there? Why is it there?
Cause it allows us to horse trade.
You know, I, I know horse trade is, is a commonly used term, but it really doesn't, it doesn't really exist. I mean, it doesn't, it exists in.
All right, to negotiate, to negotiate mitigation.
Okay, but the practical reason or the real scientific reason, engineering reason for the 25 to 100 foot zone is the following. It recognizes that the 75 foot buffer, if it was fully developed, is a precious and important commodity and it is adversely impacted by adjacent activities. That's the importance of the 25.
Yes, but this document that you submitted talks about situations where instead of a 75 foot being required, a 30 to 66 foot might be perfectly adequate. So in other words, you're, 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 you're contradicting.
I'm not contradicting. This is a complicated subject. And yes, you can find contradictions within it, but the 75 to 100 was developed around the notion of fully developed, or when I say fully developed, a vegetative buffer of a 75 foot width.
That's based on the DEC data standard, DEC science and regulation.
And that's our thing.
And that's the most specific.
And that's our code.
DEC.
And that's our code in this town.
Yeah.
Right?
Would you like to make the 75 to 100 stricter as a 75?
No, what I would like to do in the 75 to.
Cause that's what, you know, the CAC is us.
Yeah, their CAC wants to not allow anyone to build on anything.
What I, what I would like to do in the 75 to 100 is be mindful of those things. And I, I have, you're going to trip me up in a minute and I'm going to keep going and get myself out of this. Is, yes, if you have turf grass that is, is within 75 to zero, one would question what you're gaining from protecting turf grass. It's, you know, you can totally restore it. The purpose is to protect the, the vegetative buffer once it's established. And it's based upon the full width of the most desirable condition, the 75 foot buffer. So does it make sense when that doesn't exist to think differently about the us 75 to 100 foot zone? You bet, because all we're protect, protecting is grass and that's pretty.
You're using a broad brush. Not all waterfront properties have grass. You're also not taking enough back that, you know, some bulkheads sit higher and that water gets, we're looking.
Some properties have zero slopes.
By the, and some properties have zero slopes. So there is an accommodation for zero slope. And the bulkhead, what is the purpose of a bulkhead in terms, all it does?
Stops water from going into the base.
It's, no, it doesn't stop erosion.
It does.
Yes, it does. That's exactly what it does.
Other side, within this, within this zero.
Stops erosion.
Turf.
Stops erosion.
Okay. So where are we on this?
I mean, it's worth discussing, but I, my concern is getting away from blanket numbers. Like obviously 100 foot, that's kind of a round number. It doesn't, that, the fact that 100 foot is such a round number indicates to me that it was not arrived at through any scientific, any scientific.
Same thing about the 75. We just established that.
No, no, that's based on, on, on DEC.
And they had to make a judgment call and they had to pull a number out that was based upon.
Well, so then make it 1,000 feet. That feels even better, doesn't it?
It doesn't matter what feels better, but they had to come up with a number that worked with all the, sort of the midpoint of all the variables. And that's, you know, what we're saying is anything which isn't like a, a solid, black and white drawn line is invalid.
Well, that's not what we're saying. No, that's not what we're saying at all. That's a total misrepresentation.
We're, we're getting late and this is not moving forward. So why don't we do this? We have, I've dulled out, um, three wetlands already. We have another. Let's start discussing this as we discuss the individual wetlands applications uh, where we can see that has a slope. This has, and we can go through the details that each one progresses and then maybe after doing a few, kind of come to a consensus of, of how to put a more standard review on this. But for now, I think we need to continue as we have been looking at these as individual projects.
Yes, but I, I have one, I have one problem with that. It just brings the knowledge base which exists within this group and current practices and moves it forward. My question to everyone sitting at the table is what are we going to do to get ourselves up to speed on all this complexity and all these variables and distill it down to something which is workable for Shelter, for Shelter Island? How are we going to get ourselves up to speed on this? Doing the same thing that we've done over and over the same way?
I don't think that's what Ian proposed.
I just propose that we, we examine each one now and try to distill something out of it as we review actual applications.
Can I, can I?
And by the way, I'm not so ignorant on all these topics.
I know. I'm kind of insulted by the way you keep.
I'm, I'm not.
You're suggesting that we don't.
But the only reason, the only. The application of these buffers seems to us arbitrary and not based on scientific or empirical data.
You read that three times now.
But you're not reading it in context.
You're inferring the wrong, you're inferring the wrong conclusion.
Yes.
And you're, you're frankly being condescending and I think you're oversimplifying.
I don't want to be condescending.
Well, you are. I'd, I'd work on it then.
Well, can I just bring up the simple fact that we, we don't? We should bring this to the table then. If we have this knowledge base, then we should bring it to the table.
I just, I just. We've been discussing this for a long time. We've been discussing this for a long time. And you've come in and you've approached it like we're, we're missing the point. And, uh, like we haven't done any work on this and.
Well, look, that's the last thing I want.
I've posed a pathway of working through these, discussing a few of these applications and seeing how it goes. I think.
There's, I think there's just one thing that I would like to add to that. And that is that we would use some.
Well, he's saying, look at them applications through the lens of if we're going to require a vegetative buffer, what buffer would require it? Why would we require it? And what's the science behind our requesting this requirement? That's what Ian's saying.
And that's what I've been advocating for a long time and I think a bunch of us have.
Yeah. On that note.
Any, any thinkers for that's in the wetlands?
Um, I want to look at it first and then we'll get back to you. We just got it today. I, I mean.
Yeah.
Are those paper copies for us?
Yeah, two of each.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah, right.
Oh, I see. For the actual reviewers.
I actually printed McCarthy already.
Yeah, I know.
You're also not listening to what people are saying and you're assuming the worst of what we're saying, which is not accurate because we are saying that we're open to the discussion and that we have been discussing it. The problem is we do need to come up with a stable criteria. There is not enough rock solid evidence on how to determine the appropriate buffer. Okay, and so it's, it's one of those things where, yeah, we do dig into it.